Hi, how are you?
I'm living the dream.
Living the dream.
What's going on with you?
Hi, how are you?
Sue, do you know Sue Henderson?
Hi.
She's being interviewed for...
Sustainability.
President of the United States.
Yes, exactly. It is, but I'm guarding the role.
Yeah.
So you're not to be the parent.
Lauren's mom.
Yes.
So I'm sure was a couple of years older than me in high school.
Oh, I know.
High school days.
Which means you're still a couple of years older.
Exactly. Tom, what are you here for today?
Absolutely.
To take a giga.
Photographs. Oh, Becky. Hello.
Good.
It's good to see you.
Very nice to see you. You're also a member of the...
Becky.
I love you. I'm Gloria's daughter.
And I don't think that you lie.
Yes. Yes, sure, my husband's toddler.
Oh.
Gloria's...
Aw. I'm a little... Thank you. So you didn't have any more glory.
Landy's daughter.
I mean, that would be...
Yes.
Yeah. And how much do we love? I don't think...
Well, it was, yes.
And that for Lori, Tom.
Which was?
Yeah. The answer was, yes, I like the purple one.
Yeah. I had it forever.
Tom, you don't want to get in on this conversation about how much you love...
I like Tom's top. It's very, very local.
Okay, very local. We need to, I'm gonna set up a few chairs. I'm going to pull some more chairs out. We don't really need this. So I'm just gonna get this out of the way. Let's try to.
375 committee.
Lovely.
Picture in the architectural drawing, the name of the school. This is the 53 memorial school here.
Soon as you go there, that angle...
When I opened the... When I opened it here, Andrea was here. Smiley sister, Liz Swanson was here. The other people. Yeah, Ellen loved it and they said, oh. Langley's office was, that's what they said.
Isn't that funny?
Yeah, yeah, so actually when I was there, it was Foster Paul's office because Foster was the principal there before he became the superintendent.
So have you all gone by the old story school site? No. On Bennett?
Something not there anymore.
The red house? No, it's the, the white one that was up on the hill that...
Was it Desi's house?
Suzanne.
And Desi Conger.
Yeah, so, yes, Shelley...
Really on the right?
Shelley O'Connor brought there. Well, if you're coming from town and on the right, yes.
Do you need more chairs?
So that should do it.
You're going up, you want to look for these stairs.
Yes, that, yes.
That wall looks...
Is it the corner of towards or...
Not quite.
No, that's the next house. The next house.
Okay, over.
Now it's John Van Aris.
Yeah, and he's on TBA. So this, what a great looking school. Why didn't we take, take it down?
Yeah, that's what happens when schools wear out and they destroy them rather than trying to fix them up.
Yes, that one looks like, anyway. So what's went there, oh, was a contemporary.
Oh, right. Maybe Chuck Billy had filled that?
It might have been, not Chuck, but it would have faded down. Yeah, and anyway, so that wouldn't really see the wall, but they, they've taken everything off the lot. And so now you can, you can see the wall. And you know Kathleen Bryant, huh? Anyway, they moved around in town like we all seem to do. And so they bought the property and then they took down the old house that was there. And I'm sure there was a company who's very nice.
And just the house down.
So...
So that was Conger, was the last name? Desi?
And Suzanne.
Yeah.
And they had three daughters, another Suzanne, Michelle.
It's like C-Z-O-N-G-E-R or something like that, yeah.
Oh, you know, I don't remember hearing that, but, but I'm sure you're right, Tom. I'm not questioning your advice. No, you don't. Don't question Tom. No, I don't, I don't...
You can all you want, dear. You might not be correct, but you could question me.
Well, let's just say I'm not correct. It wouldn't be a big surprise. Any...
You don't seem to have a big agenda tonight, which is nice. One, one never knows what's liable to come up, right?
Well, you know, there is that. We have some interesting items that we will be...
Kathy Anderson.
So anyway.
We came to her at church.
But keep saying we should go out for a... Or something.
We're going out to dinner.
I did not get the memo.
Sorry.
Where will you go?
To the cows.
Yep.
If we can put up with the noise. Hi Kathy, if we put up with the noise from the football fans, are we eating, young lady?
Well...
I've been speaking to you for a while.
No.
No.
Oh, no. What did she say? Is there something I need to address with her that she's...
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's gotta come on. Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking we'd go...
Also, I would say Mr. Feed was here filming.
I know. He did.
Dedicated to that for some long time. I said I guess... Even very dedicated for a long time.
He was, and he sat in on the planning board. He did well. And you know what? I didn't get to that.
Yeah, it's, it's...
No. Confusion or angst sometimes, but it's not necessarily a bad thing. Talking about when Tim Gates would film the various meetings.
Tripod Tim was, I mean...
What did you call?
Tripod Tim. Oh, he had to set the tripod up and put the camera on it, so...
Yes, yeah, you know what? But it...
At one point, we had to pass a vote, take a vote saying, you know, you're here to run, run the material, run, run stuff for the cable. Boy, you're here as a resident. You can't do this and then leave the camera and then go over there and start bringing up points.
And you can?
Well, we totally can.
This is Manchester and sometimes we sort of take it a little bit...
Well, you know, it's...
Sometimes there's two sets of rules.
Well, the main thing is it's not a problem if someone is willing to educate themselves. Where, where it's in regard to that.
How are you?
His back's coming up against the trees.
A little boggy up there.
Watch it. Bugs, right?
Everything was, everything was just fine until you took your bike off that thing. Until you took your bike off.
I feel like in the van, you remember the junior, we done that for laughing. The TV show, I'm laughing, I remember laughing.
These chairs...
And I can't... Yes.
Should be some rage.
There we go. And... Debbie coming for... I'm just, just checking. What's going on? Good.
Hi Erica.
Hello, guys. So somebody said they liked the... And I don't know whether it was... I'll cut, I'll let you add it.
Yes, it was on the Facebook. That was Erica, Erica Taylor. A few handing us the chicken over. It was really nice.
Ah, Dr. Keel. Mr. Pratt. I feel like we almost have Manchester Club here, you know? You can't take John round to Manchester Club, bring Manchester Clubs to Dogland.
You know, he wasn't there last Thursday, you know?
Yeah, we know. We had trees on the...
Yeah. Put a little bed out here on the...
Job is wonderful. As they do. All right.
Hi Anne.
Okay, meeting.
Hi Anne. I'm very busy.
Yeah.
First team.
Never been here.
You can log into mine.
I'm hoping that the meeting's over.
It's okay, I have a full charge of left. But yours is an iPad, right?
No, this is a server.
Oh, I see. There you go.
The meeting goes beyond the life of my computer.
That's what I feel, but I'll turn it on when I know I need it, so...
Well, we'll all try to take that into consideration.
There you go.
Rule number one for the evening.
Well, Tom, and to both of you, we could learn a lot from what I said about how you, how you do meeting. For sure.
Well, I don't know, I get myself into trouble more than once a while.
You know what? I, I don't, I don't doubt that, but what I'm sure, I'm sure you always were quite diplomatic about it.
Most of the time.
Most of the time. Some of us endeavor to become more diplomatic, most of the time.
Some of the times you just have to say to people, I listen to what you have to say and I don't agree with you. You've listened to what I've had to say and you don't agree with me, so we'll just decide to disagree.
We'll agree to disagree. Isn't that the way it's, it's, it's stated? What time is it? You mean I can't say I'm right and you're wrong? I judge you. No, no, it's that. Erica, how are you? Very well, thank you. Greg, are you going to put it on yours?
We did.
Ryan, we're just shaking it up for you. Keep you on your toes. You know, if, if you can go ahead and get that, Greg, I'll let you...
Yeah.
How does that sound?
It's too low. It's a big wood chair, Brian. I don't like it. Actually, it wants to close from the door.
Yeah.
Coming out of the wood. Still looking way out.
Greg, did you have any information? No, I'll leave this. We pick on.
No.
Are you doing?
Yeah, I'm... We said it's 13% of what your state tax liability is.
Are you going to make it, do you know?
She is not.
Oh, that's unfortunate, I'm sorry to hear that.
We will give her due praise for all the work that she did for us.
Do you know who took the pictures of the veterans or the, the people? How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm.
We said it's thirteen percent of what your state tax liability.
Barbie's going to make it, do you know?
She is not.
Oh, that's unfortunate. I'm sorry to hear that.
We will give her a new raise for all the work that she did for us.
Do you know who took the pictures of the veterans or the, the people in room seven?
Jason Groh.
Gloucester.
Was over the city council, I think, in Gloucester. I hope he still is. All around in all the communities. Really nice to walk in there and see Adele.
I know, I know. And didn't we, for a long time, have her hat over there?
Yeah.
It, yeah, it's there and.
The first meeting, she wasn't here. Brought in a bouquet of flowers and put them.
In her chair?
In her chair.
Oh, you mean when she moved over to here and?
Right next to that map.
Yep.
So some people do have their designated seats.
Yeah.
Adele had fifty years of it, so.
Here in town meeting, right on the aisle, so an auditorium could see her go. I do that way.
Okay, it is six thirty. I would like to bring to order the Monday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty two meeting of the select board. And we will do a roll call vote of all those in attendance. Brian Solacey.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata and Harrison.
What happens if I say no?
Then you're not here.
Okay.
Yes, and Becky James. So we have a full board and we are being recorded by sixteen twenty-three studios. And first on the agenda this evening, three seventy-fifth committee and gift elementary school photos. Tom and Sue.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sue and I here representing the three hundred and seventy-fifth committee this evening. I know you think like, oh, that should have ended a couple of years ago, but it was only a year ago this week that we were having the two acti- two final activities, the tea, and this coming Saturday was the parade. Though we're still mucking through some of the end things. At the end of the celebration, the committee had raised enough money to fundraise and have some excess funds. And with that excess funds, the members of the committee were able to propose ideas and projects that we might do. The members of the committee then reduced that number and then voted basically many of our projects have to do with the history of the town of Manchester. Tonight, we're going to present two photographs of the memorial school to the select board and to the town. One photo of the memorial school that was built in nineteen fifty-three. And yes, I walked into it in nineteen fifty-four. Brian's kindergarten class. And the second photo of the brand-new memorial school just opened in twenty twenty-one. These two photos are both taken by Barbie Alby. Barbie was very important to both of us in terms of making sure to have the photos taken, printed. Got both of the, got one of the photos down to Chuck at Marty's Frameworks, and then he'd be both of the frames for them. Because we couldn't get the other second photo until the building was done of the new memorial school. And when you see that, you'll see some of the work she's done. She spent a tremendous amount of time balancing out what was in the frames and then actually took it upon herself to get it to someone to mount the picture and, and, and close in the frame at her own expense, so. We really owe a great debt, a great debt to Barbie for the work she did. We're hoping that this black space on the wall over there will be a nice place for these photos to sit. And we hope that people in the select board and people who come to your meetings will be able to see them. People who can meet here for other boards and commissions meetings will be able to see them. And if they get up fast enough, even those people who can input early voting starting next week can see them. So I'll show you the two photographs. Okay. Okay, I'm the new work.
The old one.
See, this photograph, this building is so long that to take a picture that would fill this, it would be about fifty percent sky, ten percent building, and forty percent pavement. So Barbie came up with the idea, we went to the schools and got the architect to send his drawing along of the same, this of the same side of the building and then put the name of the building in the middle, so.
Those are wonderful.
Have these two photographs there for the town and would hope that you will appreciate them.
I'm sure they will be greatly appreciated and treasured, and thank you so much for all you've done with the three seventy-fifth committee and Barbie as well for the photos. Yes. Would you like to turn them around or do you want to leave them outside out? I'm not sure. Those are wonderful. Good.
Tom, I'm curious, when was the photo of the old memorial school taken?
I'll be.
Obviously not recently.
On the board, because I asked Barbie to take it, hoping that we'd be able to get a picture up here. So I'd say it's probably five or six years ago.
Okay.
Was that with the park that they put in right outside?
Yeah, the little reading park in front of us.
The boat, Greg, we have a letter draft and a level of appreciation for Barbie.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, um, thank you, and I'd love it if you all stayed, but I understand dinner calls, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was great to see you too.
I know this is kind of like wishing you good luck, but you have to worry. I hope you have a short agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, next is the drought update. We are a little ahead of schedule here. So do you want to do? Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like, anybody want to make a motion?
Except for those in second or seventh.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacey. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I recuse my thoughts if I was not here. Right, same. Okay. Do you want to designate the Harvard Department items as surplus? Everybody had.
Has a made the listed Harvard Department items as surplus. Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote. Brian? John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne? And I, and Becky votes, yes. Okay. Moving right along. Proclamation for the, actually, Water Resource Protection Task Force Consultant Approval. Did everybody have an opportunity to read over that? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to, motion.
Okay, motion made to approve the Water Resource Protection Task Force Consultant approval of the, so, okay, moved by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison.
Brian had already seconded.
I didn't second.
Okay.
Anne?
Yes, that's.
Kathy, yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian, Becky says, yes. Okay, and approved the proclamation for Manchester Rotary's twentieth anniversary.
I moved to.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved by Brian, seconded by John. Roll call vote. Anne, yes? Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky says, yes, it's unanimous. We still have two minutes.
Excuse me, I'll, I'll present that next Wednesday.
Okay.
Do we, is this something that we should all be?
No, if you want to, it's, yeah, I'm going, I'm a member of the Rotary and that's the.
I think that would be nice to do, and I.
It all means everyone's fighting.
And I think it's nice that you presented.
Yes.
So that's. And if you wouldn't mind just sending around the time for that. All the classes. Are those in glasses? Oh, there we go, okay.
Except my chair.
Okay. Wait, just checking here. We still have two minutes. Do we want to do any of the May drawn updates?
Mine's very short.
Okay, go ahead.
For the Conservation Commission, I just learned that they approved eelgrass control and their next meeting. Wherever there's eelgrass.
Okay.
Under the water. And their next meeting is later this month. The school committee meets tomorrow. And I missed this council in eight.
Okay. We're meeting nine twenty, school committee. Okay. Brian, any updates from you?
Just to follow up on the email that Cheryl sent. So Park and Recreation have moved on the pickleball court to go hours eight to eight and still investigate some other sound deadening measures. Now, I guess that hasn't been published at this point, so there were a couple of complaints on Thursday or Friday. But, so that's, I'm being proactive as far as that, or reactive, but correct in a way. Pine Street, Pine Street Fields. There was a public hearing meeting last week. A little positive. I think it was addressed by safety. I had spoken with Chuck Dan earlier. And there will be an extension of the sidewalk to that field and then a crosswalk at that point. And then there's an event at Masconahoma Park, a family fun day by Memorial School, this guy sponsored by Memorial School, that took me looking for us for approvals on, as well as a couple of benches.
Thank you. That brings us to six forty-one, so we can have our drought conditions update. Greg, is that you or do we have Chuck?
Yeah, no, I can actually do that for you. So pretty status quo. We may get some good rain tonight, we'll see. Let's see if the thunderstorms materialize, but certainly we are still significantly behind on total rainfall. But fortunately, we, you know, gravelly pond and the Lincoln Street well continued to do okay. It's still a little bit above where we were last year at this time. So it's, we're real close to being at the same spot. I'm sorry, not last year, the year before.
Okay.
Last year was a wet year, so.
If we were above last year.
Last year was a wet, it's the prior year. And so, like I said, we, we continue to do okay, however, we are still significantly behind and we continue to ask people to be conservative of water use, and that continues to be the case. We are using less water than we normally do, and so it's, it's, it's helpful that people are taking to heart the requests. And so that seems to be working. So we'll continue to monitor the status quo at this point.
Any questions, Brian?
None.
Juan?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm still, I'm not sure who's working on a graphic of, say, five-year water, not consumption, but water levels for heavily.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know if it was Nate DPW, but somebody.
Right, we talked about that last time.
Yeah, we did, and that would be very helpful, just to put everything in context.
Yes.
In terms of where things are, the water level versus the what historically is.
Is Chuck doing that?
I, I think some, some, yeah.
When do we know when?
I know we have all the numbers, it's just assembling.
Is there a?
Yeah, hopefully in the next week or so.
Fine.
Okay. Kathy? Anne?
My questions?
My only, I, I know that the numbers show that people have been very responsive and helpful. Have we had any real issues with anybody in town?
Just nothing significant. We've had a handful of violations, but nothing. Nothing major and and the follow-up, you know, requests, a reminder, and a request to, to follow these seems to be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Committee reappointment, and if it's got one minute to wait on that, is Eileen Buckley on, Greg? Do you see her?
I did speak to her yesterday. She's awesome.
Is she planning on being here?
I don't know, she didn't say. I didn't say, but she's.
She would like to be reappointed.
No. I don't think that we have any issues with not reappointing her.
I moved to reappoint.
Oh, we have to wait one minute? Yeah. Or so many seconds. Say it again, Greg?
You're close enough.
Okay, close enough, good. Go ahead.
Moved to reappoint Eileen Buckley to the board of registered for three-year term ending in twenty twenty-five.
That's it.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Brian. Roll call vote, Anne?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Becky says, yes, unanimous. Thank you, Eileen. Next up, we have many interviews is.
I think there's not until six, we have another five minutes.
Okay, then let's go on to.
I'm going to be attending virtually.
Right.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I was thinking, let's go ahead and say that. So we have two people, but we'll wait for five more minutes. Greg, you, actually, we could do, let's see. Kathy, any updates?
Yep. Yeah, so the planning board will be here presenting in a few minutes. I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'll let them give an update regarding dispatch. I don't think I've given an update since Greg and I and the two chiefs met in Middleton. So that went very well. I just can't say how well the team is working. The regional team in Middleton made it a very strong point to say that the Manchester team, both chiefs and their people have been highly responsive. They're on the phone multiple times a day, the breath of fresh air, so the team is working really well together. We reviewed a detailed contingency plan that hopefully we won't need to use in the event we lose some staffing and could not maintain our nine-one-one operations. But it was extremely detailed and they did a very nice job of that. We did review the overall schedule and they did a nice job in clarifying which tasks are Manchester's responsibilities versus the regional team's responsibilities. So it was very clear. Both chiefs are on board with what they need to do. The Middleton team has accelerated equipment purchases to try and prevent any schedule slips due to supply chain disruptions. Key things for us is that, that we're going to get a monthly progress report, which will include an issues log, any I asked for any upcoming decisions or actions that we may need to take, so we could, you know, kind of get that on our agenda. And when we are ready, we should let them know when we want to engage in some type of public communications plan. So Allison is, is going forward preparing a proposed communications plan for us to review when we are ready and when the town is ready to start receiving communications about this effort. So I think we talked about maybe after the first of the year or something. Greg, but we should just keep that in mind, that we would want to review that at some point, but they're already up and running, kind of putting together ideas on how to share information with the community and, you know, possibly do a tour or whatever. And then they have scheduled bi-week, is it bi-weekly meetings, Greg, that, for the project team? I'm sorry, which kind of bi-weekly, twice a week or every other week? Every other. So we're off to a good start. Bi-weekly is every other week.
Great. So by meeting, with that, is, do we have anything that can go on the website?
Not yet.
So they are working on a, on a, on a
Yes, probably like a high-level timeline.
Easily digested timeline. The detailed timeline is, is extremely detailed.
Yes, we don't need on.
Right, so they, Chris Ryan did show me a draft of a scaled-down version of that, which looked good. So we'll be working on getting that posted. So, we'll be working on getting that posted.
I, I think anything that's at this point is just.
So, what, what, I mean, I think it would be helpful for us to, what would um, you all like to hear, other than the, other than the, you know, monthly report we get from them? You know, obviously, issues will be escalated in the interim. Is there anything you would in particular like to see, or would you like to engage in any resident communication before the end of the year? Um, other than just posting, you know, information on the website?
Brian?
No, I think at this point, uh, we just start to feed the information slowly. Okay, it's digestible, but also be prepared to answer questions, be somewhere on a point where someone does have a question, we can answer the time of the question.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay with letting things be, kind of incubate the next several months. It's a long time before this kicks in, and if you start to make noise now, yeah, you know, pretty soon people will be, they'll kind of tune it out. When they should be attentive, I don't know what typical attention span is, but it seems to me that eight, nine months is too long.
Well.
Just a few.
You don't, yeah, we don't need to be making much of a tour. Anne?
Um, I'd like to see the timeline. When it's available.
So, Greg, maybe if you would like to um, share that, is, is, because what, we, we might want to see it, do you want to see it before it gets posted, or do you just want?
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I think we want to see it before it gets posted, the redo of the, the timeline, we don't want the four hundred line version that we saw two weeks ago, we want the
I would like to see the four hundred line.
You must see that one too?
Yeah.
All right, so.
And I would also like to, yeah, um, I would also, you know, definitely the progress reports and with your, you know, bi-weekly meetings. I'd love a, a synopsis.
Right.
If that's, just so that if, if we're asked a question, we have a little information.
And for that, that's every two weeks.
Thank you. Every two weeks.
I'd like, uh, is there any way to put a press release out? I'm, it's, it's nice to put out some positive news that, out of the town.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you know, how much?
Maybe something that's small, or something that just says that it's going well and the transition is moving very smoothly. A little kudos to the, uh, the two Public Safety Officers at the town.
It might not be a bad idea, I mean, maybe once we take a look at the high-level timeline, right? And Tiffany can make it pretty, right? And we, um, it's something that could be posted on the website, like she did with the water ban stuff, she made like a nice one-pager, right? And then, um, to your point, Brian, we could post that on social media and with a little extra, things are going well, and here's the timelines, that kind of.
Also, something that could be mentioned in passing during Greg, in Greg's weekly.
That's right, yeah, that's true, yeah.
It's just, just something that, that, because we did say something that we'd be updating.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, this brings us to six fifty-two, thank you Kathy, and committee interviews of Sue Henderson and Louisa McIntosh for Sustainability Committee. Do we have Allison on the online?
Allison is on, yeah.
And how about Louisa?
I'm here.
Hello, Allison.
Hi, Becky.
Um, has everybody had a chance to read over the information provided to us for the candidates? Okay, um, Allison, would you like to say anything about your two committee potentials?
You know, to be honest, I haven't actually seen the information they gave you. But I'm, you know, confident that they are both wonderful. And, you know, I know that Louisa has very good qualifications for the committee and Louisa, and they both do. And I, I just don't know a whole lot about them yet, but they both volunteered in response to my, uh, my urgent plea for membership, so, um, you know, you'll be the judge, but it, it seems like they, the situation now is that we're really down to two members. We have Nadia Wetzler and Carly Cook, and Carly's term has actually expired, so I'm not, and I don't even know if she's re-upping. So, really, we just, if, you know, we only have two, possibly three people on the committee. So, in order for the committee to move forward, we really need to hire some more people, so that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first, we have Sue Henderson.
Evening, I'm Sue Henderson, and I know some of you. I am currently a middle school teacher in Swamp Scott, uh, science teacher and English language teacher. My background is, I have a PhD in educational research, measurement, and statistics. Back in the nineteen seventies, I worked alongside the Harrisons at the Manchester Community Center when we did recycling there, where people actually brought their cans. I worked as a girl scout, I think I was working on a recycling badge or something. So, I'm, you know, very, I'm qualified in terms of having a science background. I worked for National Science Foundation as a evaluator for about ten years. I'm practiced at creating surveys, working on committees, facilitating meetings. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I'm passionate about the environment and sustainability and thinking about the big picture and the smaller picture.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you very, very much. Um, Brian, any questions?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, all right. Excellent.
Not, John?
Yeah, so have you, have you spoken with Allison at all at this point?
Yes, we actually spoke, I stepped out of class today and answered a call. And we spoke briefly um, over the weekend, so, or before the weekend. So, um, she was ill, she was traveling, so we didn't get to actually sit down and talk about the committee work. Um, and you and I worked on the historic.
Yes, we did, a number of years ago.
Right.
I think we, hmm, probably six. Five or six years ago, because I, I do, I do recall that, so good. So, you've had a little participation in town, town government here.
And I have triplets that are twenty-three years old, so one is out of college, so I will have more time.
That's how I know you, I remember now. I remember seeing you wheeling the triplets around.
Yes, so. But anyway, I'm happy to serve and.
But you're welcome to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, do you have any questions? Yeah, just a quick question, what do you hope to accomplish as part of the Sustainability Committee?
Well, I think I would rely on Allison to be the lead, and I don't know what the town goals are right now. Um, as a resident, I have the perception of what we're doing in terms of waste management, sustainability, um, you know, drought issues and making people aware, public awareness of these issues and really kind of getting our public to be more like citizen scientists and understand what's going on, and then they'll be more motivated to make change or, or cut back or mitigate issues before they become larger issues. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Anne.
I'm overwhelmed, so thank you for volunteering.
Okay.
Well, you answered my, asked my question, so that, that was it. Thank you, Sue. Um, and why don't we go ahead and speak with Louisa McIntosh?
Um, so, I don't have a background related at all to this opening, but other than the fact that lived in Manchester pretty much my whole life, the last thirty-four years. And I, since the nineteen seventies, have been recycling and, you know, now gone to a point where having, you know, been clearing out houses, deceased parents and things, and just like what to do with all the stuff that we don't need and trying, you know, rather than throwing it away, all this kind of reuse, repurpose, you know, things like that, and um, I, I feel that it would be great if, you know, you look on the bottom of the plastic something and, and most of them I know can't be recycled, I mean, I, I even listened to a little audio book all about recycling and only number one and number two plastics, and even within those numbers, only some of them are recycled. And I think in some states, in some towns, maybe more is recycled, so we wanted, I've never done anything for the town before and I felt badly about it, and when I saw this opening, I was like, yes, that's right. So, um, you know, I'm hoping there are ways to increase availability of recycling, I don't know. Clean up our environment.
Well, thank you very much, Louisa. Um, and I do remember when our boys were little and I'd go to your house, there was always reused, recycled, there was evidently that going on, um, but thank you very much. Brian?
No, I'm good, thank you for stepping up.
She had to, I'll do it.
Come on, use that one once.
You can reuse it, recycle it, you know. John?
Yeah, no, but thank you, thank you for volunteering, Louisa, and you kind of ran down a list of a number of things that you're taking initiatives to do, and I assume those initiatives are ones that you're going to try to promulgate or more expand here, so I'll, I'll assume that's your to-do list.
Yeah.
That you'll discuss with the fellow committee, committee members, so thank you.
Um, just the same question, is there, I mean, you mentioned a lot of focus on recycling, is there anything else as part of sustainability that you'd like to accomplish by being on the committee?
I, I mean, there are a lot of things that would be great to accomplish, and I'm also interested in, I have geothermal heating and cooling in my house, I have solar panels, I'd like to get battery, you know, I'd like to be off the grid, there's, there's a lot of stuff.
That's excellent, I think that's an excellent focus. The team has done so many great things regarding recycling in particular, and there's a bigger world to explore, so excellent, that's great.
Anne?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Excuse me, Becky, could I just ask one question? Because it has been actually extremely difficult to get people to step up, and I'm so grateful to these two for doing, but really, it's taken about a year to get new recruits, and as a result, the terms are expiring in twenty twenty-four, so if we could, if, if they are approved for the committee, could their terms be extended to twenty-five, because, you know, otherwise, we're just not getting the full-time span of, that they're entitled to, because it's supposed to be a three-year term, I think.
Um, well, that, that, I, I, I think, given that they are um, stepping up for terms to end in twenty twenty-two, I don't, can we change those terms or?
So, we, we assume that this would be until twenty-five.
Okay.
Yes, because on the website, it says twenty-four, and I was assuming we could extend it to twenty-five.
So, typically the three-year term, so.
Yeah.
So, that would work, all right, I just want to make sure we're not I mean, and, and often, we um, wait, think, and come back in two weeks. I don't think we need to do that today. Um, so, thank you, and may I have a motion to approve Sue Henderson and Louisa McIntosh to the Sustainability Committee for each of them a three-year term ending in twenty twenty-five?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, moved by John Round, seconded Anne Harrison, roll call vote, Anne?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky says yes, it's unanimous. Allison, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, and um, this is so critical to all of us, so thank you.
I hope you get as much pleasure from contributing to the town as the rest of us do, I think you will.
Thank you again.
Thank you for your service.
Very much. All right, so next up, we have, uh, what time, seven oh three, good. We can go to the open meeting law complaint from Lorraine Iavani, dated and received on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. And do we need to vote on a formal acknowledgement, Greg, of that? Or is this?
You're formally acknowledging through your, so you're pronouncing just there, so that's fine.
Okay, so now we discuss it. Probably best to, is Michelle on?
Uh, no, we don't have her.
Okay, so we just discussed what we read.
Yes.
Okay.
So, she, she reviewed the complaint.
Is Lorraine Iavani on, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Be here while she's on my phone.
Um, Lorraine, are you?
There's someone just connecting, I think she's usually on an iPhone.
Okay. Is there any way to verify whether Lorraine is on or not?
Uh, not if she's not registered with her name.
Okay, all right, well.
Yeah, um, hello, uh, this is Lorraine Iavani, I am actually calling in to listen, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lorraine. So, what we did, Lorraine, was we acknowledged receipt of your open meeting law complaint, and we're now going to discuss it. Okay.
So, so town council has prepared a draft response for your review. So, a couple, couple of, couple of highlights. First, on a technical basis, open meeting law complaints are supposed to be filed within thirty days of the alleged violation, um, so this is past that date. But putting that aside, uh, town council further examined the, the headings, so the, the first complaint was about the June sixteenth meeting, which was a special meeting that was held at the Regional Regional Dispatch Center, the North Shore Regional Dispatch Center, and the um, agenda item stated it was for a tour and discussion of their services. So, town council thought that that's indeed what happened. Um, and so she feels that it was, it's appropriate to say that there was no violation there, as, as the agenda did accurately list what took place.
And the location and.
Right, right, state of the location. And so then, the second meeting that was implicated in the complaint was the June twenty-first meeting. And again, the uh, the agenda listing was a dispatch update. Um, and so you, you provided an update at that meeting, you went on to vote to, to join the regional dispatch at that meeting. Town council notes in, in the response that it's not required that potential votes be highlighted in an agenda heading. And so, the fact that there was a vote is not a, a grounds for a violation, in her opinion. And believes that that is something that the AG's office would uphold as well. And however, as you know, through uh, abundance of caution, as that phrase is used, you did reaffirm that vote on, at your August first meeting. And that agenda, for the August first meeting, it specifically said reaffirm vote to join and to ratify the, the MOU. Uh, so even if the AG's office were to find the June twenty-first meeting defective in terms of its uh, agenda listing, the cure is to redo it, and you've already, you've already done that. So, that's, in a, in a summary format, that's what the letter contains. If you have further points you'd like it to make, then she can make those changes. Otherwise, you can vote to have town council submit the letter on your behalf as, as.
Okay, thank you. No, I think it's very thorough in what it covers, I'm glad it brings in the emails regarding the meeting at the REC Center. Uh, Anne, do you have any comments or questions on that?
No, I, I don't.
Kathy?
No, I think the response was comprehensive.
John?
Comprehensive would be the word, yes.
Yeah.
Details, yeah.
Brian?
No, I think it's, again, jumping on conference.
Okay. Um, the chair allows Erica Brown to make comment.
No comment, it's a question, and I'm only asking, I apologize for interrupting you, and I'm, you know, you're not public. But you're on this topic, it was a five-page letter that KTO Law prepared, it was extremely thorough. How much money did that cost the town? How much money did that cost the town?
Um, is that something we do now, or would that be something discussed at another time?
Well, if I had the answer, I'd give it to you. I just, I don't, I don't have that bill yet.
Or how much does KP charge per hour or?
220 an hour.
Okay.
So it's.
Five piece letter? I'll follow up.
I'm sure it's a few hours.
Okay. May I ask you a reason for the question? You don't have to answer that. I'm just asking.
I just find, I'm just tracking the cost of this type of procedural thing, whether it's necessary versus when it's perhaps not necessary versus when it's maybe in between. I just want to start tracking it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no. Anne?
Do you have some? Not directly with the letter. I was surprised to learn that there was such a short deadline and that it was not tied to the availability of minutes. It was assumed that if it was an open meeting and you didn't attend, and then you can't complain.
The recording.
Yeah, I, I asked the same question. I was a little surprised about that, too. But there is case law that it, that it is not dependent on the minutes, that it is dependent the actual posting of the agenda. For this kind of, for this, for this one specifically, asking about or questioning the agenda listing, so.
Um, we do tend to post the recordings pretty quickly, is that?
But we didn't have a recording of the meeting at
At the REC Center.
The June 21st one was, yes. But that was not as, that was not a Zoom meeting, so we did not have.
Right. And we weren't going to be Zooming inside a.
No. And, and, and state law probably hasn't caught up with Zoom recordings to recognize them. So, okay.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Any other questions? Okay.
I hope that we notify KP Law that their letter is satisfactory to us and that they should send it to the Dr. Joe.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, second to Kathy Bellotta. Roll call vote, Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And Becky says yes, it's unanimous. Okay.
And so we will be sending this, you have already the same, a copy of the same one.
Okay. Next up, we have Sarah. A little early, early?
Yep.
You know, 7:10, and it's now 7:12. So.
We have board committee updates.
So there's Sarah. Planning board update, zoning amendment outreach, number six.
Becky?
Hello, Sarah. Okay, is that the?
Yes, I did have the amended. I'm just looking at the wrong one. I'm sorry. Okay.
You turn the same off. She's in the same.
Right. Mia, how are you tonight, Sarah?
Fine, thanks.
All right.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. I know, I see that we have Ron and at least Mary on as well. So it's not just me. And, and in speaking with Greg and Kathy Bellotta, the focus tonight was to update you on where we are on communications to the town about the zoning changes that are being proposed for the November town meeting. So just to back up, we have a number of zoning changes planned for town meeting. The current language is on the planning board website under zoning changes. So if people are looking for them, there's also a copy at town hall and the library. And we voted to move those forward back in May. We will be revisiting some small things, I think, tomorrow night. And perhaps for the next couple of weeks, but and in addition, the FINCOM in May did approve, did vote that the articles did not have a financial impact that was subject to their review. So just wanted to also update you, remind you that we did a number of cricket articles in the spring. We created a website and we had public hearings as well as four years of meetings, which have been fairly well attended, given remote meetings and even prior to that. But going forward, we, last week at our meeting, discussed a working work plan for our work in the between now and town meeting. And in that is a engagement communication plan, the goals of which are to make sure that people have the high level understanding of what we're trying to do. And that is to improve the clarity of our zoning, to do a few policy changes, and to update some administrative things and to make our zoning comply with case law and state law in a couple of cases. And to do that, we're continuing to update our webpage. We'll be doing some social media posts and we plan about four cricket articles, the first which has already appeared. We plan to do a direct mail postcard to all postal customers that will direct them to the website and to inform them that town meeting is coming and to also invite them to, right now, we're calling this an open house, tentatively scheduled for October 13th at the high school. The planning board is still finalizing and hasn't really discussed the format for that open house. So any questions about how that format would be is conjecture on my part at this point, rather than agreed on by the board. So we will be talking about that in an upcoming meeting and, and creating a format. And we will be doing some sort of a town meeting handout. And so hopefully, the goals will be met of people understanding that we're doing some zoning changes and the, the overall intent. And those people who are ambitious and want to read them, they are available now. They're available, like I said, website, library, town hall. And lastly, there's a lot of info, two last things. There's a lot of information on the planning board's website about some of the history and how these zoning changes link to the master plan. And we do hope that the selectmen will give us input if you have it. But also that you will endorse the proposed zoning changes at the town meeting. Back to you, Becky.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarah. I read through everything that you sent and have attended quite a few of the meetings myself. And know that you all have been diligently working away for years now. Brian, do you have any questions?
No question, but it's like a comment. It's published on the Wednesday CBA Agenda. Discussing, CBA will be discussing these as well. Take position.
Great. At this Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, not aware of that. But we'll try to have somebody there to answer questions. Great, fabulous.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, no, I've, I've, I've reviewed the information on, on the website. I think it's pretty complete, as, as far as we've gone. I, I, this is a very difficult type of issue to try and present. Are you at the special meeting going to have some sort of a, a presentation or slides to show what you're talking about as you work through this? Or how is that going to work? Or have you not decided yet?
I think it's not, it, the board has not made a collective decision about that. And we're trying, you know, we, I know that the board wants to make a collective decision on these things. I think there's also the challenge when we, when we tried to think about that for the, in the past, there is a challenge about making sure that it is legible for everybody and is not confusing. One of the things, again, that we have done on the draft, on the material that, that is currently posted, and I have talked to Alan about whether he wants to do this, is that the motions, I believe, I will have line numbers on them so that at least the conversation about the specifics of a particular part of a at one of the motions for one of the articles will be easier to navigate in the, the dense material. So that's one change that we haven't done before, that I hope we will be able to affect. But as for the presentation at town meeting, which was your question, the board has not decided that. And I think there's a little work to figure out how to make it really effective.
Okay, well, I, I do have a concern because there's a lot of stuff that moves and there's some stuff that's new. And to try and get that point across to everybody is a challenge. And, you know, and you've got to put that in the context of how the motions are going to be written so that it's addressed in a, in, in a sensible order. But I assume that the workshops and all of the other promotional, or I wouldn't say promotional, but informational activities that you've got here will help to kind of clear out, clear up what, you know, how you might want to approach.
Right. We had a working session this last, in the last week. We added, our full board needs to, to look at it, but some clarity on the website about whether a change is an administrative change for clarity or a policy change. So hopefully, people will feel confident in moving along with us on some of the administrative changes. And that we can keep our, in that discussion for policy is obviously where, where we would want to spend time and, and hear from, hear from folks. And there may be differences of opinion, of course, on, on policy.
Thank you, John.
Okay, good.
Yeah, just a, two questions. Sarah, you, you just mentioned the little subcommittee meeting that Anne and I participated in on Friday regarding the summary of changes table with the risks. Is that going to be brought before the whole planning board tomorrow night so that it can be posted? Or has it?
Yeah, I have to find, I, I have, I'm not sure it'll come tomorrow night. I just haven't gotten to getting it finalized or ready, you know, cleaned up. But it, it will certainly come before the planning, full board before we post it. So.
Thank you. That was question one. And then question two on the work coming in, I just wanted to confirm the dates with Greg. So the, I, I think it's just important on their timeline, we're clear when the final, I guess, warrant that we need to approve is going to come to this board, right? And is that 10/17 the correct date?
It is. You, you may, you know, need to do, if, if we were to get, no, that's the deadline. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm asking. Is that the deadline?
10/17 is the deadline for petition articles. So there may be.
Is this a petition article?
No.
Okay.
But all I'm saying is the goal is for you to finalize the warrant on the 17th.
Okay.
So if we get something on the 17th, we'll have to, it's a last minute editing. But the, the goal is to have it finalized on the 17th.
Okay, because I, because I did want to bring to the board's attention, you know, the items highlighted in yellow. The, I believe, Sarah, the planning board was going to just take a quick look at the articles again and two different meetings to review them in the context of feedback that's already been received from the public to see if anything needed to be tweaked. So so what's published on the website right now is probably close to the final version, but not, it could change based on those two meetings. Is that correct?
Yeah, and we intend to keep the website up to date. So if there's been a change, I think we would note that this is a change version that was updated, you know, in, you know, we'll try to make that clear. So if somebody spent the time to review an old version, they would be able to know what, but.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. That was it.
Anne?
Others saying that it would be nice to see their articles before the 17th and, and one of our regular meetings before the 17th. So that we can get home before midnight. But we, we would like.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we can do that well before the 17th.
Excellent.
Man, one of the issues, I, I, I I think the biggest difficulty the planning board is facing is with trying to have the bylaws easily understandable to the public. When you're reading a bylaw and, and not having it in context as it relates to whatever is before the planning board and how that bylaw is used, it, it can lose a little of why it's there. And I've, you all have really done yeoman's duty in trying to get this digestible for the public. Pre-Zoom, that's P R E Z O O M, not presuming something. We'd all meet in public and, and the applicants would be there and the bylaws were fairly straightforward in their applications. And it gets a little harder to try to help the general public become educated on how the planning board bylaws work. But I think you all are doing a very good job and I, I just want to give you a, a big thanks for the myriad hours, days, and years that you all have put into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, Claire, thank you, Becky. I mean, a lot of that predates me. So, and, and has work that was done by members who are no longer members of the board. So, but one quick thing is we're, the tentative date for this open house is perhaps either October 12th or October 13th. It's still being finalized. So I think I said October 13th, sort of definitively, but we're, we're still working that out.
So you assume that, that there will be no changes as a result of the open house?
The intent, correct. Well, that's my assumption. I think we would have, we do have a little bit of time. But I think the intent of the open house is to give people the opportunity to understand the bylaws. At least that's my, that's my personal opinion. And under, yeah, talk, talk them through with us and that kind of thing. We've had plenty of opportunities for people to give us input, and we've had a lot of input. And we have made changes based on that input. We heard a lot of things in the public hearings and, and all along. So.
I, I would say to Anne's point, though, if, if the board, the select board is being asked to go on as supporting the changes, I think as soon as we could have those to look at and go over, the better. We can always read them independently and then have a meeting other than a regularly posted meeting.
We can get you copies immediately. I mean, they're.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
So I have a suggestion. I think a good place to start would be that summary document that we worked on Friday. As soon as that's finalized, Sarah, I, I think that would be a good place to start to make sure the board has that. And, and if you haven't reviewed the table explanation of change, or that, I, I think it would be helpful. Because it does explain the why. I'm not sure the latest version is posted.
That's what I'm wondering, because I'm online looking at the summary and it doesn't, I don't think it.
Yeah, we're revising that. Yeah.
Yeah, it has to go before the whole planning board. It was just a subcommittee that met on Friday. So once it gets approved by the entire board, then, then we can all see that. And then I, I think the other suggestion would be is if it looked as though there were two different places on, on the work plan where you were, with the planning board was going to finalize the, 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 the articles. So we could break it up into two meetings. I'm not sure what meetings follow, what select board meetings follow those, a planning board meetings. What select board meetings follow those planning board meetings, but we could try and split it up if that would you know, get those early ones done and talk about those. Do we support those? And then when they're ready with the second set, we could, we could meet on them separately.
I think typically what, and, and that's one, that's a good idea. Typically what we do is, does anybody have anything they'd like to pull out? And then otherwise we just, you know, can have our meeting.
Okay.
Could work that way. I don't think, Sarah, that the planning board needs to send more than just an email update that says, go ahead onto the website and we can look them over there. And if we want to print them out, we can. That makes sense rather than
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, we can also, don't forget there's a copy. It's probably the easiest thing to just go to town, to the town clerk and make a copy rather than trying to print them all out. But you can decide. Anyway, we'll work with you to, to make sure you have a, a, a set to review and what is online today is what we have voted in May. And as we update them, if, if we do, then we will certainly let you know.
Okay, that would be good because I any changes or updates, that would be great. Well, thank you very much. And Sarah, please thank the entire board for all the work and time you all have been putting into this.
Thanks for having us and for your interest in this. It's great.
Anne, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wondered if there's anybody with anybody from the public.
Well, I think that that would go, I, rather than come to ask any questions for the planning board, you should go to a planning board meeting. Is my thought?
Great.
Okay.
Just mention this is probably going to throw monkey wrenches everything. I think we've established on the lowest common denominator.
What do you mean?
This far is looking at some simply. Is there a chance we have a case study for every, for every, every change? And lay it out in real terms.
What is the, what is the function of this case study that you're saying?
People that, when you, I mean, it's, there's a lot of words. Okay. And they aren't confused. Okay. If we can simplify it and for, for instance, ADUs, okay, the change and then discuss what exactly John Smith wants to do.
Are you saying for the planning board to do that?
Yes.
Okay, this is where and to use your words, let's let the professionals do their job. We have our planning board. This is what they study. It's, it's sort of what you're asking is to take any law and put it into layman's terms. So any
But the layman are going to be the ones that are voting.
Say it again?
But the laypeople are going to be the ones that are going to be making these decisions.
Absolutely. That's where the laypeople are voting to approve what the professionals put forward.
I'm just
And I know, I understand what you're saying, but when you say case law.
Not case law, case that make, come up with a, a scenario. Okay. That addresses these 10 and 12.
Have you read every single bylaw? I think to do
You picked out a handful of them and did an example project, how it would I was in or be more difficult under those.
Absolutely.
Right. And I, I'm just looking at it from the point of somebody been on the planning board. And I, I, it's, it's for me, it's hard to wrap my head around what you're asking, but I'm not a member of the planning board anymore.
I, I just have a suggestion. So well, a question and a suggestion. So Brian, I would ask that if you haven't taken a look at the summary table that they put in what they're going to be publishing is a little bit simpler. That's what we spent like three hours doing on Friday.
I know.
So you're right. It, the, the, the matrix they put together and trying to explain the changes and the risks. We, a bunch of us got together on Friday, tried to simplify it. So I would use that as your starting point. And then if a use case would be helpful and if the planning board thought that was a good idea, they might do it just on the, the articles that involve land use changes because the majority of them are administrative. Right, right. So that's what I'm just saying. It, it's probably like two or three. You know, that might encounter, it might be worth some extra work to try and get people to understand. And whether it's pictures and zoning charts and say, hey, this, this change only affects that zone, you know, pictures are really good. And a scenario might be helpful, but it would be limited to just those controversial ones which involve real changes if, if they
And the visual, getting back to what you're suggesting, a visual would probably be a good idea to be applied in the way you're, you're suggesting, Brian. However, that's a suggestion that we could know and, and again, I'm, you know, from having been on that board to wrap my head around that, it just got my head spinning.
And my point is that you have experience on the board and with charge of a stump.
Yep. And, and that's, it's the learning curve of a board or committee. And I, you know, it's a nice way of trying to help people to understand and giving the graphics certainly can't hurt.
Can I, can I just jump in for a second?
Absolutely.
I think Brian makes a good suggestion. I'm, we've been one of the challenges is that there's broad applicability of the bylaws and it's hard to generalize a scenario and you kind of go down to a, we've, we've been to, what do I call it, like a a scenario death trap. Well, what about this? And what about that? What about this? And so that's a challenge that we can, that we want to avoid because it's not productive. But perhaps some examples may be helpful. I think so, so that's the, the, and the so the other thing is that if you folks as a board need more time or one-on-one understanding them, that would be, I think that would be a good use of time because I think your endorsement of these zoning changes will go a long way to giving people confidence that we've thought about these things. You know, a lot of them are making things clearer. Bring them in compliance with case, case law. The other one is, you know, performance standards rather than prescriptive standards. Those are, you know, much more current way of thinking about things when we have a special permit. And then we have a couple of policy changes that for, that, that I think are the controversial, if, where people may, may have differences of opinion. And I, I find the scenarios sometimes get weighted. And, and it's, it's very hard to have a kind of an impartial scenario. But we can think about it. I'm just struggling because it, it's so that we can talk about it as well. If, and if certainly board members are able to help us do, it'd be great.
No, I, I, I I understand, Sarah, and I, and I think that, that you're, you're giving the perfect example how it's difficult to understand. And it is. And that's maybe
Yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, it's complex. But we're hoping to make it easy to understand. The, by categorizing things, as Kathy said, with the table and and being clear about the, the, the significant pieces of the change. So hopefully our table that, that when the board goes through it will help to do that and as I said, town meeting handout and the cricket articles. So that's the goal and the open house.
I, I think the one-on-one is a very good idea for some of the board members who are not as familiar with how the the planning board bylaws come into play. And I, I would say that if, if if we can understand it and get behind it. That could go a long way. And so the one-on-one, I think, would enable people to perhaps get a better grasp of what is trying to be done and what is being asked of the select board. Agreeable? Everybody? Okay. All right.
Thank you for your interest and support on this.
Thank you all, to the entire planning board. Thank you. Anybody else have any other things for planning board before we say goodnight? Okay, good night, planning board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have the harbor space master plan. And by on? I saw you there. There's by on.
I'm here.
Hello, by on.
Good evening. Whoop, can you hear me?
You too.
Originally, we had put this on the agenda after requests that's been retained by some homeowners, property owners around the harbor. In matter, they requested a meeting to talk about the possibility of moving forward with the harbor master plan. They, they're not able to be here tonight. So they have asked that we put this on the agenda for the October 3rd meeting. If you want to have some background information, you could have Brian perhaps provide some of that.
Okay. And this is the TRC, that, that the TRC company?
Yes.
When did we find out they couldn't make tonight?
Confirmed Thursday or Friday.
Okay, thank you. So they wanted to reschedule to go on the, the agenda for the third. So that is all that we have on there. So that means we do not have anything to discuss for regarding by on at the harbor.
I have a question about this.
You could give some background information if that would be helpful in preparation for the third or you can wait for the third. It's, it's up to you.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just a little unclear as to the scope of what, what is usually included in a harbor master plan? Is it on water? Does it include onshore? You know, is it? Can somebody elaborate what the intended scope is?
By on, I
I think Brian could probably provide some examples of what other towns have done.
Yes, that would, that would be helpful.
So when I was the Kittery Main Harbor Master, we did have a master plan that had been developed long before I started and, and it was something that was revisited once a decade. It's a when we talk about comprehensive, we're talking about everything to do with what touches the Manchester waterfront. Not just moorings, not just placement of moorings, but development resources such as shellfish. Is there a chance that in the course of the lifetime of the document, the shellfish might reopen? Eel grasp nets, their health. Maybe types of moorings that are being used, seawall condition. It is a massively comprehensive doc, document. The town would be wise to hire a consulting firm to develop this product. And the role of the harbor department will be really small.
Okay, yeah. And I think, thank you for that. The reason for my question was a document that's been provided seemed extremely focused on, on water. And, and that's fine if that's what the intent is. If the intent is to go beyond and start touching shoreside, you know, activities that could spill into other, you know, the purview of other boards and committees. And so I just, I was really if we decide we're going to do something, I just think clarifying the scope is critically important.
Right. So other, other boards would definitely, other departments would definitely need to be involved. DPW, for example, parking wrecks, they have the beaches and really the newest thing that's showing up in these documents when communities are putting them together is sea level rise and how it's going to affect the community. So it, it is extremely comprehensive and it does cross departments and, and boards and will require some real serious consideration.
A question can I, I assume these are public documents from the various communities. I'm wondering if it could be sent, just a sample document. I'm not planning on reading it, but I am planning on just perusing and say, ah, what are the topics that are in here?
So, so Brian has sent me a couple of examples.
Oh, he does.
I can
And you send that to the board here. We just want to kind of maybe just look at the table of contents, but appreciate your honesty.
I, I think there's South Shore communities, but the idea is just for you to get an understanding of what this document looks like. And it really ought to be part of the community's larger master plan. It should be a, a document within that.
Right. I, I, I guess my, my only comment, you know, these other communities, are they interested in increasing tourism or not? Because depending on the culture of the community, the harbor master plan would look very different, you know, like in a Newbury port versus versus a community that wanted to be a little bit quieter. If we're, if we lean towards the quieter side, I, I hope we can get some of those examples because otherwise I think it could be misunderstood what we're trying to do. Or, or maybe not.
Another way of looking at it is as, you know, you do the surveys prior, but also you're bringing options
Right.
to the town. So if you do option, follow this track, it's limiting voting toward, you know, you can, you can offer potentially
Well, it's
scenarios.
It sounded like the harbor master plan was not centered around voting, but anybody just who, who might access the harbor. By on used the word development. So to me, that meant development of the shoreline, which anybody, you don't need a boat to, you know, have a harbor walk or whatever. So I just wanted to understand the, like you said, the topics and options. I just don't want things to get too scary, too
Absolutely.
The, the idea of the document is that it, it is all inclusive. It's, it's looking what the resources are, how they've been developed and then gives a community a, something that it can use to decide how to best move forward to maintain the harbor. And the waterfront.
I'm sorry, I think with the expansion of the Reed Park docks and the expectation that there's going to be a more of a voting community, a more of a, of a transient voting community coming in, I think it's important that we take a look at how best to manage. I don't want to use the word exploit, but, but it's to, to utilize what Manchester has to offer.
Well, and it's, it's not just the transient voters. It's also looking at our working boats that we have, the lobster people, fishermen, right? And, and I mean, that's what Manchester in terms of Europeans has always been about is fishing. And
I think there's an exciting opportunity here.
It is.
And I think that we ought to, we ought to manage it. And we should rather than, we tell the, the consultants what we envision and have them develop a plan according to that.
At some point, we need to figure out what our goal is.
Exactly.
That's the first step.
Well, and I don't think we're there yet. Well, but, but I, I believe and by on, correct me if I'm not correct on this, that the harbor master plan brings information that provides options. Okay, he's nodding yes.
Yep, that's correct. It, it will the document, Kittery, it didn't lay out the plan for the town. But it, it very clearly showed the town what it had, what resources and amenities. But it, it very clearly showed the town what it had, what resources and amenities were in place already. The condition of them, what needed to be done to ensure that they remain viable. And it's, it's, it's not a document to tell you what to do, it's a document to tell you where you are. It's, the harbor is a complex place, and no one person really understands everything that's going on in all parts of it. The document does that.
I guess then I wouldn't call it a plan, would call it a survey. Because a plan suggests to me.
Right, I, I understand where Anna's going. When I think of Manchester's master, master plan, it's a document that outlines what our vision is. What I hear Byon proposing, which I agree with, is it's an evaluation of what we have. Okay, and that's obviously an excellent first step. And then we, we could refer to our master plan, okay, what did we say we wanted our harbor to be, or the level of tourism or whatever? But to Brian's earlier, to Byon's earlier point, we've got to connect the ultimate harbor master plan to our town master plan. But the first step is, what do we have? Is it in good shape, bad shape? You know, what are the opportunities?
And then what risks does it face?
Yep, and then we engage the town and say, okay, here's where we're at, where, what do we wanna, what do we wanna be when we grow up?
So to that end, and, and not, not just looking for the moorings and, and anchoring and docks. What would our next step be to actually have a harbor master study done? Is that something that there's by on? Go ahead, take it away, Byon.
Well, so I would, I did send for those two examples. I also sent a list, I think it's three different, maybe it's four different consulting groups that could be contacted to provide some detail and, and what it might cost to put such a document together. So I, I would start with looking at the documents that are provided, see if there is real interest in doing that, and then reaching out to these consulting firms to see what they have to offer.
I'm sorry, go ahead and finish, Brian.
Just see what they have to offer the town, see, see what they're, they would do.
Thank you, Kathy, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
It said, that sounds like an RFI, that we take a look at what these documents are. We, we, we pick what we might want to include in our high level first thought of scope, and we send an RFI out to a bunch of consulting firms, and they would give us a ballpark.
Is that what we do, or is that through Byon?
I mean.
Not through me.
Yep.
This is far too comprehensive for, for what I'm capable of. That, my wife could do it, I cannot. I'm like, that's, harbor masters don't put these plans together, I can tell you.
Oh, no, I didn't mean that you do it.
No, I know.
Okay, thank you.
To oversee it, smarter people like you.
Brian, what was your?
No, I, I agree with Kathy, and our, our RFI is, I think, the next step, once we determine what we're trying to, what the information we're trying to.
Yeah, this, this, this obviously is a separate project from this TRC thing, that's, that's a separate thing. And I think we've gotta hear what's going on with this, because that'll feed into what some of our opinions are, as well as a couple of these sample. We've got two, whatever you've got.
Coastal community, communities with harbors will have, you know, the plans on their website.
So it's perhaps a near-term project, but it's not an immediate project. We've got some other things to deal with here. Yeah, this is immediate.
But, yeah, I think that if we, I don't wanna put this off until next year. I think that we can start thinking about this. And if you wouldn't mind forwarding that info to us, Greg.
And you can think of it, you know, different phases as well. One is gonna be, you know, fact finding, what, what are existing conditions, what, what is the history been, what are the trends have been? So that's sort of some baseline data, and that will inform your thoughts on the next.
I think this is directly related to the goals we established at our last op site. It covers a couple of different ones, right?
Yes.
And so this is one way to look at tackling a piece of what we said.
Exactly, okay. Why don't we put this, can we come back to this at our second October meeting? No, we're gonna be working on.
We're, October 3rd, we're hearing from TRC. We may as well discuss it after we've heard what they have to say.
Okay, so we can, I, I also would like, if we can get a representative from representatives from both Proctors and Manchester Marine, I think that would be if, if, if we've got TRC coming before us, discussing what's being proposed by the two yards, marinas in town, I mean, it's only fair that they be here as well. So we will have okay, both of those, ten, three. All right, any other comments on the harbor master plan discussion? All set? Okay, Byon, thank you very much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye. You too. All right. Bye. Next up on our agenda is the select board office hours. Okay, and as we had discussed, we talked about first and third Thursday from five to six thirty over at Seaside One. In addition to continuing the, the conversation corners down in front of the post office periodically, those wouldn't be set in stone, those would be sort of pop-up. Okay, and we had also talked about at the at the select board office hours, that we might have a department head, or maybe even a committee head, something like that as well. Do we still want to do that, or do we want to start out as a couple of select board members there? For the first or second couple meetings? Brian?
I think that sooner we get the, the public engaged with the both the, the departments and the select board, the better off we're gonna be. So if we can have, you know, pop up for, you know, Thursday at five o'clock and laughing, or whatever it is, or right here at Seaside One, the department head. And it, there's no set agenda, we'll just make that decision at some point. Chuck damn there, and, and Ann Harrison's there, okay? Just chat, or Ann's not there. Ann and Johnny, me in front of the, the post office, all went along.
That's you, Brian, that's your.
I never said I would.
I got, I got a question. Why don't we set this up here at Town Hall, downstairs in the hall?
We talked about that, and the thought was if somebody comes in wanting to discuss something that they do not want in the middle of a public venue, that was, that was the thought there, and, and.
I don't, I don't know that we have to be that risk averse, I mean, we're, I, I think the primary initiative is to, is, is to get out in front of the, the, the folks that are around, the public, and get that exposure. And I don't know how many people come into the Town Hall on Thursday nights.
It's, it's pretty quiet.
Except the preliminary voting will be going on, won't it?
Well, that's a problem.
That'll end, I think, at four thirty, it'll be over by the time.
Okay, would that be our pop-up? I mean, do we wanna have a pop-up? You know, like we had, did Festival by the Sea, because that's where the people were. Do you wanna have a conversation corner sometime during early voting?
I was just gonna say, I don't know if we have to.
No, because you're not in the polling place, I mean, you're not in the room.
And we're not campaigning.
It'd be set up in here, so if you were downstairs at the table in the hall, that would be fine.
Oh, yes, okay.
It, it hasn't been a flood of people, the, the early voting is like a week, I forget the dates, I should have that, but because it's stretched out over the period, it's, it's triples.
So in the last, where we just had an early voting for the September election, was there one day or time that was busy?
I, I could check with, with Diana, Diana, that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
And I, I misspoke, it's not the first and third, it's the second and fourth Thursdays that we, we discussed. Because I think the third Thursday is potentially a meeting if we, we, we'd set that up. So poor John's never gonna get back to his Thursday.
The other thing too, I think on these, these department head, maybe it's just when something starts to prickly. Okay, that people start to talk about, in this case, it'd be the Culver and, and, and School Street. Okay, have, make Chuck available, or if Chuck wants him to go, if nothing's going on in town, there's no reason to drag a, a company out. Maybe that's something to think about.
It, it, we can also align it with budgets, I mean, we're gonna be discussing budgets at some point, and what, you know, before or after they go before the finance committee, maybe that's an opportunity for the department to be available.
Right, but it's also an opportunity just for, for you to have a conversation with the department head while you're waiting for other.
Right, which is, which is a nice way.
I, I just think that, that here is the most prominent arrangement to get to, to chat with people. Because they're coming in, and the chance that they would stop by and chat for a couple of minutes is a lot higher than if they have to go someplace else, because they have to first be aware of it. And all of that is, I think, a challenge.
Certainly, there's more of a chance for, a chance encounter here than over at Seaside One.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of doing that at least for a start, to see how that works in terms of exposure.
I'm thinking about sitting at a table, wishing there were somebody to talk to.
Is that an advocate for the, a department head, or another one of us?
If, if we're sitting down at a table in the lobby, then chances are we'll be sitting there on our own. If we're over at Seaside One, where there's a little more room, then you sit with a department head, or a committee member, or Allison Onhold-White from Sustainable, you know, would something.
So you'd be sitting with the department head here, too.
Well, but down in the entry?
Yeah, I don't know, so.
The acoustics there are really weird.
Acoustics are weird. Are very interesting. We gotta go one at a time, because otherwise.
Outside of Town Hall, it can be intimidating to sit here. If you're sitting, I mean, I know, I talked to Glenn Vargas, Vega brother, okay, a while ago, obviously. And he had offered, if you wanna help meet here with, have some coffee and meet some business leaders here, by all means. I mean, maybe we, we, we reach out to a couple of, you know, hey, can you give us a table for an hour? We'll be sitting at, at Beach Street, or we'll be sitting at Towers, or we'll be sitting at the Boobert, can buy, stop by. It's, it's just.
That's a really nice idea.
We're moving out of our, okay, domain, and more into a, a more personal touch. And other than inviting them into my living room, which is why it was clean today. You know, it's, I think that that's, it gives you a more personal touch. I'll take the legion.
Greg, you were going to say something, sorry.
No, it's coming on, fine.
Okay, are there any fall events that we want to tag along, like we did with Festival by the Sea, is there anything other than early voting?
Early voting, some, some school events.
Welcome to Athens.
Halloween, oh, that's a scary thought.
There is the PTO event, that's, that's the Memorial School Camp, Fall Family Festival that, that was on the agenda tonight.
That'd be a good opportunity.
I'll be at the cardboard vote race.
That's not hopefully soon.
No, it's two weeks, two weeks.
Okay.
It's usually a couple hundred people there, by the way.
No, that's another good opportunity.
That's what I'm just saying, what's already happening that we could kind of parachute?
We have Christmas by the Sea in early December.
Yep, yep, that's early December, and it gets too cold. Then we gotta come.
Well, Brian said, then we can go to one of the local.
We should become more approachable.
No.
But I, I, and I think it would be helpful to start by continuing to go where they are. So, because of that, we, we, you know, the police chief, God love him, he's holding these, these hours pretty regularly, and I don't think a lot of people show up when they're, like you said, when they're at Town Hall. Captain Dusty's thing was great, because people wanna go to Captain Dusty, so.
Okay, so to that end, why don't we Kathy, would you be able to send the board dates for a few of these events coming up? And then what we can do is just say who wants to do what. Brian's already got the cardboard brace, but maybe somebody should be there, pull him out of the water.
No, actually, the harbor mass will be there, I mean, it's, it's, it's well.
I know, I've, I've been doing.
Yes, so, okay, let's do that, and then we can just toss out, so for right now, do we, do we tentatively table the office hours over at Seaside One? Or do we do that in addition to the?
Let me publish one and see what happens.
Okay, all right, and I'm happy to do one, if anybody else, we did say two members want to be there, and then we can then we can see if another, if a department head might wish to join us. Sound good? Okay, so if that's the second, fourth, fourth. Let's see, what is the fourth Thursday? I think we're kind of late to do it, the fourth is the twenty-second, that's a little too short notice. So that puts us to the thirteenth of October, which might be the planning board event. Or the twenty-seventh, it might, even if it is the planning board event, I wonder if that might not be a, a good place for us to go.
I, I think either way, so if they have it on the twelfth, we could be a place people can come to the day after. And if not, we ask for a table at, at the high school, well, yeah, that's a great idea.
So what we can say is select board office hours, we don't have to have it just at Seaside One. Office hours, five to six Thursday, Saturday, somewhere.
Somewhere, stay tuned.
We're just moving target.
Yeah, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna.
Okay, so, so October thirteenth, I will do that with whomever else.
What day is that?
It's Thursday, October thirteenth. And just so long as we don't have more than two of us, is my feeling. Not that we would miss anybody, we could go without discussing, I think optics, it's better not to have too many. That sound good?
TBD.
Okay, yes, why to be at? Okay, yes, why to be at? Uh, well, we'll figure out. Yes, TBD location. Right. Uh, that brings us to any more liaison updates?
Um, I I can come. Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm basically dealing with water at all levels of purity.
Yeah.
I know that certainly. The pipes are pipes are going along fine School Street. I know that that project is 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 on schedule. But uh, we want to schedule a tour of the water treatment plant.
I I I would like.
And that should happen sometime in the next couple of weeks. It's best if it is done during working hours because the guys that are working there will be there. It was cold, really. And Chuck, Chuck and Nate, I mean, they can be pretty flexible. So I um, I can either solicit some times that are good because they're pretty flexible, most of their schedules. Or I can get a couple of dates from them and send them to you. How do you want to do this to try and work something out?
Um, if you're, if if we could not do a Wednesday or Friday, that would help me out. And if so, then I'll try to work around that. My my schedule is a bit fluid, but those could be the busy.
That leaves a couple, a lot of other days.
You know, just.
All right. So I'll send everybody an email within the next twenty four hours or so. And I'll say I'll I'll pick out some dates. This will happen in sometime in the next two weeks.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
And it'll be a Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
And if you get enough advance notice, Brian, and it's cold enough, or we give you a mask?
Well, you know, just as long as heat isn't too. We'll 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 make it later on in the day, like. I didn't count after four. Three thirty or something. I can screw, uh, leave work early. You know, I can leave for four. Okay. I don't know if we can make it that late, but we'll make it later. I mean, oh, by the way, it's once every couple of weeks or something like that. Oh, this is. By the way, I just, I lost my job at the Lifetime Gym because of this. Doing work at the top of the town, so.
Sacrifices.
You can join the MAC because the MAC is continuing to be up and running.
I was I was refereeing there at the Lifetime Gym on Wednesday nights and then all of a sudden SLB comes up.
Okay.
And we were doing three Wednesdays a month. So I lost my membership. It was like the real surprise.
Okay, so Board of Health update. Uh, I sat in on that until I had to come here to our meeting and they they were checking, uh, readdressing the bylaws we have for various sized farm animals. And the zoning. And that's someone came over here. So there you go. That's my update. Right, anybody else? All right, Greg, you're up.
Okay, thank you. So a few meetings back, we talked about the tree policy. So DDW, actually, they they already have. They're doing some additional outreach to the tree companies, making sure they're aware. Friends of trees have offered to help. They they've done some publicity, working with Tiffany, getting some additional information out on the website, pushing that out a bit, and that possibility of doing a flyer becomes all house ones. Just giving people a heads up on on the tree policy, where we might use the next.
How about a town meeting? Can when they put out information?
Yeah, they could be a handout.
Meeting also handouts.
There could be a flyer there.
Yeah.
So that's a good suggestion. So efforts continue to to get the word out about the tree policies are and asking people's compliance. And two, I just reviewing the goal setting session that you had last week and continue to work on identifying the access under each goal. Did identify the five goals, first from being advancing confidence in credibility of town governance. Two is preserving small town character. Uh, while addressing housing economic and conservation needs. Third, strategic goal is adapting to the challenges climate change is bringing to us. Fourth one is maintaining fiscal policies and spending discipline despite, you know, it is currently an inflationary time. And also many, many pressing needs that we have, a lot of continuing needs for for the dollars that we do have. And then the fifth overall strategy is improving, maintaining and improving municipal infrastructure and also planning for long term facility needs of the town.
Not much.
So good list. Uh, this is a lot there. Uh, you also identified the importance of being consistent with the master plan and that being some of the foundational document that steers us as we worked on these fine areas. So that's all good progress. And like I say, it's your next session, focus drilled down a little more on actual action steps for each one.
Would you like us to send you some in advance of our next meeting? Or are you, like, how would you like to go about collecting the potential next steps? Are you gonna come in with them? Or we can send you some ideas ahead of time?
It'd be great if people can send ideas ahead of time and then I'll compile those and make them make them available for that meeting.
So October third. Is that what you said, the next meeting?
We talk about another special meeting?
Okay, so the next special meeting would be that would be, we're going to be Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Uh, that's the twentieth of October. Okay, ten twenty.
So just for clarification, we had already scheduled a meeting for October sixth for the governance project. Correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so this would be one to focus on the basically the other goals. Okay, okay. Just want to be clear.
That would set for four o'clock because I had an event that evening. So we're doing that. But this, you know, are we going to be working on goals at that time?
So that one was specifically for the master plan. The governance project.
I didn't have that on my calendar this time.
I had it on.
The sixth.
This is sixth at four o'clock, four o'clock, and it was Sue Beckman.
Right.
Okay, that's that's the call off for that.
Yeah.
Then we're proposing one on October twentieth.
There goes the Manchester Club again. Yeah, well, let's make it earlier than.
We can do that, you know?
All right.
All right, so.
It was last Thursday.
So let.
You both at four P M?
Four P. So now we are.
Four thirty, that's a little bit.
Um, this is October twentieth.
Twenty.
I use my phone. I can't use that. So October twentieth at four o'clock, is that what we're looking, right? I've got that on there. So October twenty, we're gonna try that. Are we doing four or four thirty? Well, John, what's easier for you?
Yeah, I'm I'm good for it on anytime up to six thirty.
Okay, Brian, what's easier for you? Okay. Um, are we saying this is an hour, hour and a half too? What do what do you think we'll need for goal setting? Probably.
Twenty, a couple of hours.
Yeah, so why don't we do four? And that'll get you out of there, all right, John?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. All right, four to six, goal setting on the twentieth. No. We'll go down to the Legion afterwards. Just kidding. Okay. We will get our ideas to you well in advance of that. So, okay, why don't we give a due to Greg by time on that? If we want to get goal setting to Greg, why don't we say the thirteenth, which is the week before? Does that sound good? Okay. Greg, does that give you?
Yep, that'll work.
Super. See, I'm learning. You're doing awesome. All right, Greg.
Yep, uh, fall town meeting, obviously, time saving on zoning amendments, which will be focused on the meeting, November fourteenth is the date. Uh, as you know, there's one citizen petition article so far that calls for possible recall provision, elected officials, so that'll be on the docket as well. The, there are a few other items that, you know, are possible to consider. One is, the fire chief is looking for approval for the vehicle fund, the dollars that have been set aside for departmental vehicles to order new ambulance. And the reason why this is potentially coming up earlier is just the the long lead time now. Looking like a two year lead time for new ambulance. So, uh, a little nervous about that kind of lead time. Anxious to get that underway if if that's of interest or a possibility. So that's one additional article, another one, uh, something you need to talk about. Um, we haven't talked about this recently. Folks in Hamilton are willing to reconsider relocating the road to that location that was voted on a half ago. They put the proviso that we're looking for the Manchester to help fund some of that. They haven't given us a figure, but I have to have that proposed figure from them next week or so. Uh, so that's another item that potentially could go on the the docket.
So that would tie in nicely, actually, with the Water Resource Protection.
Yeah, what happened to their bonded money?
So, um, the the bond folks agreed to give them.
Extension.
An extension.
Oh, okay. All right. This is interesting.
Yeah, so so, yeah, they they were feeling under the pressure of that. But they had follow up conversations and they were there to begin an extension.
How much of an extension? Could this be on our go to the annual, rather than the special?
So they they don't want to do that because they still have to get special legislation. So it is chapter ninety seven lands. Article ninety seven, article ninety seven lands. Uh, so it requires legislative approval as well.
Okay.
So they would, they would, it would work fairly well if we have a meeting in November, then they could tee it up.
Right.
For January with the new legislative session.
How would we fund it?
Uh, well, you could fund it out of fund balance is one.
This depends how much money they would. We don't know. Yeah.
But i- if it's enough that that it has to come out, can't be handled from fund balance, then.
How much might, but what's the ballpark number on balance?
From us, we have around four million.
How much?
Four.
Million.
And so, I mean, we're talking, we're talking, you know, a couple hundred thousand.
Yes, I I have, yeah, we knew that. Okay.
That might be interesting to look into from the perspective of the ponds over there and the water shed or sheds that play into that.
Oh, yeah, the 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 water task force has certainly discussed that and pushed that around a little bit. This was kind of a sidebar discussion with all of this and Hamilton was pretty much focused on, this is what we're doing. You had your shot and but they had this money deadline.
Yep, yep, I remember that.
And it always was curious to me why, you know, to build this road, moving it gonna cost certainly more money than just paving the road that's there.
Right.
And so they were prepared, I don't know how, to spend money on that. I don't know all of the finances.
They were playing nice is what it was.
Yeah.
They were being very good neighbors.
So in any way, yeah, the water task force is aware of that. They, some noise there, but they just wanted to do what they wanted to do. So we, it has not been a topic in the past.
Well, I I think that was the way it was handled. Um, or or the way they got beat up in inappropriately, in my opinion, and the fact that they're even potentially coming back. If we could possibly get a way to further protect the water there. It might be a good opportunity.
Yes.
I think it's worth.
It's 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 worth a serious discussion, I think, you know.
Everybody think that's a reasonable?
Yes, I do.
You don't always get a second chance.
No.
And this is our third. That's true.
Something.
Let's hope there's the charm. Okay, all right. Thank you, Greg. Yes, I guess that board is amenable to pursuing this is is this something we should involve the finance committee in sooner rather than later?
Yep.
Then come, con con, language. Less so the other two. Yeah, because it's all in Hamilton.
When do you think you're gonna know the number, Greg? Greg, what's?
Uh, help by next week.
Okay. And this is, of course, this is an ask. This isn't, these aren't necessarily, it's just can you help us with this?
Right, right. So it's a negotiation, but yes.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Do we need to handle the braising weight line?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if we want to protect another, the larger watershed.
Certainly.
And it seems this this.
Good portion of the watershed certainly isn't happening.
It's, yes, the synergy and we gotta just explore.
Well, this this mostly benefits us, so.
It does.
Yeah. Okay.
So then another possibility, we give, that's something we have talked about at any great length, but TIPS, attractive incremental financing arrangements. So basically, it's used by communities to help typically a larger development is being proposed in town to say, uh, you're gonna do a significant improvement to a property and instead of evaluating you at a hundred percent, assessing you at a hundred percent value from day one, you you ramp it up over time. And so, uh, there's two step process. The voters would have to authorize you to enter into TIF negotiations. And then you would do it on a case by case basis and come to terms with a particular project. Obviously, the cell signaling technology project would would be a prime candidate for something like this. And what's in it for the town? Perhaps they would pay for uh, many of the utility improvements in in exchange for a TIF, something like that. That's that would be a possibility. But again, step one is to first have the voters authorize you to consider such arrangements and then you do the negotiations.
All right, so so they're they're not looking for this at this point. This is just a tool that we could use to.
I've had, I've had one conversation with them about it.
Oh, you you have already?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just when they talked about the utility, you know, they said, well, can the town put in money? Just when they talked about the utility, you know, they said, well, can the town put in money, and I said, well, frankly, we might be more interested in. Giving you a break on your taxes and you paying for it rather than us coming up with new money. It's just a.
Development tool that's used all over.
Yes, yes. It's, it's a frequent tool that's used in communities that typically have more development than we.
It, it sounds kind of revenue neutral to me, in other words, you get less tax revenue, but the money is.
Right, so you still get a bump because you're gonna, you still get the higher value that's there, you're not, you're just not going to a hundred percent right away.
Right.
So you're delaying some revenue, but you're still getting a bucket revenue.
And there, but there's a sort of a quid pro quo then.
Is it a color of money issue or is it a revenue recognition timing issue?
I'm sorry, I hear the first point.
Is it a color of money issue? You know, money from, money coming from different buckets issue, or is it just revenue recognition timing? This TIF, it's just.
Can you explain the revenue recognition issue?
If they pay us taxes, that's revenue to the town.
Right.
And so, how that gets accounted for is called revenue recognition sometimes, and is it a timing of that? So, like you said, we would. Get less revenue quarters two through four of a given year and get more revenue later on? Or is it just, is it a changing of when we see the revenue or?
You're foregoing some revenue.
Okay.
You're foregoing revenue, but they're paying for, certainly pay for some of this, some of this, so if you don't do the tip, you get all the revenue, but now you've got to pay for the sewer. So.
The sewer money would come out of different buckets, so it's a different buckets, it's color of money.
It's different pockets, but it may be kind of revenue neutral, which is kind of the way I, I see it.
You could do it.
It doesn't have to be revenue.
No, but.
The negotiation. And, and the ones that you read about are the ones that distinctly do not turn out.
They don't work out.
But Brian, you've seen.
Oftentimes, they are, they are, you are give, oftentimes, communities will give up a little bit of revenue as an enticement for that development.
The word right there is enticement.
Because it does, long-term, you're, you're getting something that you didn't have before.
The value of the land is X or zero, okay, when you have a developer coming in, he's willing to develop this land, the value of the land's gonna go up. We don't, okay, and to, over time, see the hundred percent value of the land, we're just gonna incrementally, tax increment finance, okay? And it's, it, it shows that we are, we're open for business.
So that's one way of doing it, and what they're, what Greg is suggesting, which I really like, it gives them the speed they need. Maybe they could do something faster and we would forego some revenue, so they could, they could do it faster perhaps than we could.
Do we held a bond or, or anything in terms of taxes that would be owed? Okay, so you know the words, getting, getting infrastructure items done or whatever that is your bond? Where your guaranteed.
If, if you come to those kind of terms.
I think, I think what happens is if we show that we're prepared to work with you, mitigation is gonna be easier too on the other end. Okay, that's, I mean, I think real estate development's the only industry where you can ask for something in return, okay? I used to call it shaking down a building.
We don't.
Mitigation, we call it mitigation and it works, okay? So, if cell signaling is, or someone XYZ corporation is willing to come in and say, well, this is what we need from you, but what are you gonna give us in return? And we already have the vehicle set up to do tips, okay, it's a lot easier to negotiate.
So that's my question.
I'm sorry, she's been wanting to.
My problem with enticement is it seems to me that self-signaling in particular is already enticed.
Yeah, I agree. That we're not, they've already made a decision.
I, yeah, well, I mean, they could, they could resell it and, and go someplace else, but the impression that they give me is that they want to be here.
Okay, so to that point though, Ian.
They just need us.
What we want from them in return. Okay, is, all right, we, okay, you're here, we want you here, this, 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 there's no mistake that Tom, Tom voted for this back in May, we want you here. Now we want more from you. Okay, and in return, we were going to forego a hundred percent tax liabilities for you. So that you can bring in, and you can improve, obviously, and the LCD is now improved a little bit more.
They, they made the decision in July, it's been seventeen million dollars.
But the, 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 one of the issues that, and, and I don't want to keep on this because we're just talking about, are we potentially amenable to further discussions in TIFs? And, and so, we will be discussing this more at the next meeting. So perhaps what we can do is get a little more information and how we might be looking at.
That's what I was gonna ask for is, just, I personally need a little more help understanding. What legal or regulatory thing we don't have in place that other towns do? TIF permission, I mean, whatever it is, it sounds like we don't have something that other towns do, and I need a little background.
So it's a local option law.
Local option law.
So, so.
Can you send us some information on that?
Yeah, no, I can, there's, there's good summary information on this. I can put together a little package.
Thank you, okay, Anne, you had one more question on this.
But one more, yeah.
Okay.
Um. Thinking about the dynamics of this upcoming town meeting. Where we have a lot of complicated planning or issues, some of which relate to development. And. I'm not sure that, I'm not, I'm concerned that the voters won't have the bandwidth.
That's a fair question. It doesn't have to go on the hall, you could do it at the annual.
Might be a good idea, especially. Planning to get through. So I think we do have the time, but I would still like to get some information and we can talk about this at the next, but I think that's a really good point, Anne.
No question.
Okay, so now brings us to. Forty B update?
Oh, yeah, so, what do you update, as expected, SLB has filed an appeal to the Housing Advisory Committee. The state board, that is the next step in forty Bs, so the, as you know, the ZBA issued a denial of the project, so the developer is appealing that denial. He's seeking an approval before the HAC. So that process will get underway, it'll take probably the better part of the year to complete. It will insist of the town and the applicant being the principal parties involved. And it's a de novo hearing, meaning that it's starting over, basically, it's not based on the record established at the ZBA. So, we as defenders of the denial, the town will be in a position then to put in expert witness testimony. As to why, why we feel it has not warrant approval. Obviously, the applicant will be doing the opposite, putting in evidence and expert testimony. Advocating for approval. Parties, other parties, other third parties can petition to, to be full parties in the proceedings. They can petition the HAC to be a full party, maybe that they could put in evidence as well. They have to petition and get approval from the HAC. They can either petition for full party status or what's called parties of interest. So, full party status means that they can submit testimony, pre-file testimony from, from experts, as well as comment. Evidence that has been filed by the town or the applicant. A party of interest only can do the latter, they, they don't put in the evidence of their own, but they put in basically commentary. Sort of rebuttal testimony or confirmation testimony, or briefings, I should say, on the evidence that others have submitted.
Is, is the. Appeal SLB submitted, will we have that on our website or?
It is, it is on the website, I think it got posted today, if not, it'll be tomorrow.
It's been available a couple of days, I, I, I saw it last.
Came Friday, I think, or Thursday. But yes, it'll, if it's not there already, it will be on the website.
To that point, the draft, the denial was drafted in such a way. Town council had great pains to make sure that. A lot of evidence could be reintroduced as opposed, or introduced as opposed to, like you say, everything that we have, that we just, all the records that. Basically, it's funded, whatever it amounts to, but, but the denial was drafted in such a way as it opens the door up to these, these, these points to be taken up again.
Yeah, I, I. I'm not seeing, I see that, that it was posted that he did appeal on the 15th, but I don't see the appeal itself.
I can forward it.
I can wait, or if you actually, thank you, yeah, that'd be nice, I would appreciate that, Brian, thank you.
Could you add some other names to that?
Maybe. Thank you, and it's good to know, that's, I know you all.
Who pays for all of this?
So, that was, that was my next comment, so this will cost the town, it's a significant amount of money. It will not be inexpensive, it will be expensive.
What, what is significant?
We're well into sixth week.
Well into sixth.
Yeah.
Well, six figures as opposed to, well, I mean, the health is part of our water resource.
That was, actually, we took that into consideration way back when. Conversations to, where do we want, where do we want to properly spend the money? Okay, back in December.
And.
Brian, I already covered that.
Right, wonderful.
There's a, there's a hand up, Carly Cook, as I have them.
Oh, okay, Carly, go ahead and unmute yourself, put your hand down, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, it's Carly Cook, One Maskinomos Street, I just had a question about, is there any hope that because of the litigation process that he might back down? Based on the costs, is that, because it is gonna be costly, obviously, for us, but for him as well, so is there any precedent of. This being a situation where they just end up backing down instead of going all the way, you know, through the hearing process? Thank you.
I would not put a lot of hope in that. I, I think.
Yeah.
It's his business.
Right, he, he, this is their business, they, they factored this in.
Right.
But, I mean, that, that's a judgment call that ultimately that they could make at any time.
But in short, probably not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Okay, any other comments from public? Comments from the board?
So just a question, do we have our conversation corner this Saturday? At the post office for next Saturday, we were gonna do that sometime.
Yeah, we, I thought we said the 24th.
Yeah, I think so, I am not here the 24th, I'm in New York.
Just on global.
Yeah, I am.
He is, and. Think that I am supposed to be working.
I mean, we can put it off for the next Saturday.
I can be there at 11, but I can't be there much before that.
Yeah, we decided kind of like 10 to 12. My computer is.
I have a puppy who has to go to puppy class, and I can't do it on Monday.
Why don't we? Now, I'm working this weekend, so I definitely can't do. I can't, so, okay. It, why don't we just go ahead and go to the, the 13th, that Thursday, let that start as our first, and. Does that work for everybody, or do you want to look at another article? Let's cover that, just the two of us, Brian, unless we want to invite, you know, exactly, right up on that, sounds like a trivia question.
It should be.
Should be. Anything else?
So we'll let, let things ride until the 13th, fine.
Sound good? Okay, any other, anything else to be discussed? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? So, second, okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Brian, roll call, both Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Anne?
Yes.
Kathy says, yes, thank you all very much who attended the meeting out there and in here. Kathy, thank you. Right, that, eight forty-five.
You're good at this.
No, that one was longer, okay. Hi, everybody. The.